Planning and zoning commission to order. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, please note that Commission Member Gelsner is on the line, obviously, and absent are Commissioners Miller and Williams. All others are here. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the last meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The Chairman says aye.
Thanks Commissioner Gelsner. The minutes for the meeting of July 21st, 2010 are approved as distributed. Is there anyone out in the audience that would like to, that has a comment on anything that is not on the agenda this evening? If so, please let us know now, otherwise we can continue, okay? Ex parte communication? Anyone? Gary?
No, none.
Okay. All right, on to new business. The first case, I will open the public hearing of Case 1035000003, the AT&amp;T Wireless Communication Facility. And Mr. Schmidt, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission Members. This item is a request for a special use to allow the installation of a proposed AT&amp;T Wireless Communication Facility, which would include a 90-foot tall monopole, antennas, and support equipment on about a 3,000-square-foot leased area within the Goodyear Public Storage Facility that's on the east side of Litchfield Road, just north of MC-85. Trying to get the glare off it for you. This is the location of Goodyear Public Storage, and the proposed monopole site is approximately right here on the map. The storage facility itself is an irregular-shaped parcel containing 16.6 acres. It's zoned I-2, general industrial, and the leased area would be located within the general center of the property, next to the portion of the southwest property line. It is proposed that the pole would be about 18 feet from the southwest property line, and there also would be an equipment shelter within the leased area. On the site plan, you will note the equipment area would be within an enclosure here, the monopole would be at this location, and then these are existing storage buildings that are on the site that help provide some screening for the equipment area. The land use of the surrounding area is basically undeveloped I-2 property to the north, which is proposed as the Citation Business Park, but there also is some residential development within the city of Avondale, zoned R-16. The TBD lumberyard on property zoned I-2 is to the south, as well as the Union Pacific Southern Railroad at MC-85. To the east are various industrial and commercial uses, residential development within the city of Avondale, and to the west, across Litchfield Road, is the Goodyear Phoenix Airport and additional undeveloped land zoned I-2 that's in the proposed Citation Business Park. The applicant is requesting two deviations from the zoning ordinance to facilitate development of this facility. The first would be to allow a wireless communication facility within 1,320 feet of another facility. There is a existing Verizon monopole located to the west of this, about 510 feet to the west in this location on the map. And the second deviation would, as I mentioned, would allow the proposed monopole to observe a setback of 18 feet from the southwest property line, instead of the required 90 feet, which is equal to the height of the pole. The applicant is proposing to install a monopole, as I mentioned, which would be available for the co-location of additional wireless service providers, and a stealth-designed monopole is not being proposed. In the staff review for this item, we've noted that in comparing this request to others that we have seen in the past, there's been a preference in the past to favor monopoles. However, monopoles have the restriction that they're usually limited to one carrier because of the stealth design, while a monopole is taller but can accommodate multiple carriers on a single pole, so thereby limiting the number of poles overall. So that is kind of a policy question that the Commission may wish to consider in this The applicant has provided photo simulations, and this is the south looking north without the pole, and then this is south looking north with the pole in place. This is a perspective from the west looking east, and then west looking east with the pole in place. Staff noted with respect to the two deviations, we find that the fact that it's closer than 1,320 feet is not a problem, given the fact that the other location is a monopole, which does not allow for co-location, so it's not practical to not allow this location because of that. The second is regarding the setback. It does not appear that the reduced setback would be adversely affecting adjoining properties, but I do need to note for the record that we did have a problem in the notice that was sent out when the adjoining property on our list was being prepared. Two of the adjacent owners were inadvertently dropped from the list as the data was converted from the assessor's site to our mailing list. We have made the applicant aware of this, but unfortunately, because of that problem, we are recommending that we would proceed with the public hearing tonight, but that we not take action on it, and we will republish, re-notify for the September meeting. However, Mr. Jared Fores, the owner of the property, is here tonight, came from out of town, and so we would recommend that you allow him an opportunity to address the Commission and make his points, as well as anyone else in the audience who's in attendance, then we can deal with the actual action on the item next month. So in conclusion, staff has recommended approval of the request, subject to the five stipulations that are listed on the staff report in your agenda. With that, I conclude my remarks, and I would stand for any questions.
All right. Do we have any questions from Commission Members?
I have a couple of questions, if I could, please. One is, do we know what the diameter or the range of the area is in which service will be improved by having the tower there? I noticed in one place it says, "Improve service for Goodyear," another place it mentions a mile or a mile and a half away that AT&amp;T has a tower that does not have a strong enough signal. So I know I've heard from people in Palm Valley, and people in Estrella Mountain, and I'm sure in other areas that are on AT&amp;T that they do not feel they get good service. Do we have an idea of what the range of this tower is in its effect?
Do you know that? Okay. I'll defer to Mr. Fores, let him approach.
Mr. Fores, please state your name for the record.
My name is Jared Fores. I live at 3134-159th Drive, Goodyear, about 11 months out of the year. We've been working on this for four months, five months. AT&amp;T has the worst, if you look at the power poles, I've been driving around, their power pole is in Avondale, about a mile and a half, two miles down M-85. They do have poor service here, Australia. They say it'll increase about five miles. Now, that's approximately. I think you have something on your agenda that states that the poor service and for emergencies and things, they are cut out. They have nothing in this area. Verizon did build one, like I say, what, 100 feet away for Verizon, because that's very poor. I've driven around. The other place is Pebble Creek has three palm poles. I lived by there, and they're within 20, 30 feet of each other, and even by residential. I just want to mention that. We're industrial, and that's the other poles that are away, so it's about five miles approximately.
So it won't reach up into Estrella Mountain then, or probably even Pebble Creek?
They'll probably have one up there.
Up there.
They'll have to. Their range, they say, they don't want to come out and say exactly, it's five to six miles.
Another question, if I could. Understanding that these monopoles can serve multiple companies and multiple equipment, did AT&amp;T look around to see if there were other monopoles that they could put their equipment on, as opposed to building a new one?
I do not work for AT&amp;T, but why we are monopole, we have two other people that are very interested, that has hardly any service here. I cannot mention them, because AT&amp;T is paying for the permits and for the process of this. But we do have two other servers that have inquired concerning when this is over with that will be in that area, and you know who they, I mean, they're not Verizon, there are other reputable people that have very little service in this area. One is a local out of Phoenix, which they would like to come in the West Valley.
So is your feeling that AT&amp;T will continue to eagerly seek out these opportunities to co-site other equipment on their monopole?
Yes, they are, and I think Steve is not here tonight. They're looking on the other side of Goodyear, right now, for a pole, on the other side of the city limits toward Luke Air Force Base.
I think the question was, is AT&amp;T amenable to allow other carriers on their?
Oh, yes, they do, yes.
Not just amenable, but would look for those kinds of opportunities?
Right. We're looking for them, and I can't say, we have a signed contract with AT&amp;T. If we approve this pole, we have two other, we have the equipment and the area to put that in. And, okay, is there anything else?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Can I, around, if you look at your view of your, the site map, we have buildings completely around it. We have a 10-foot wall. I don't know if you know where Goodyear Self Storage is. It's all industrial, that's why we built there four years ago. I was here standing in front, not at this location, but the other. It was a pretty sad area. And we have built it up, put a nice facility in, next to the railroad tracks, which is about 100-foot easement, even a little bit longer, there's three rails there. We have industrial on one side that has about a 40-foot building that's not ours, on the south side, and on the east side is the airport, which has 60, 70-foot, you know, buildings and tank towers, and it kind of fits in that area, because it's all industrial, heavy industrial. And right around in our buildings, we have a 25-foot building on one side, and about a 20-foot building, that's on the east side, that's a brand-new storage. On the south side, we have a building that's already there, so there, no equipment would be seen, and about 25 feet of the 30-foot of the pole would not be seen. Then we have the 10-foot, and it's gated. Verizon has had problems with vandalism already, four times. That area, guys, we just got tagged again last night, outside our fences. We're very secure, that's why the AT&amp;T and the other carriers like our place, because we have, it's gated, we have good site with our cameras inside, and then they will put up a cyclone fence, too, around it. Any questions?
Mr. Schlosser?
Sean, I have a question for Joe Schmidt, whenever he gets a chance.
Go ahead, Gary.
Joe, could you put up the aerial photograph? When I was looking at the staff report, I couldn't see it, and could you show me on the aerial where this pole will be located, and then where the other pole is that is 600 feet away?
Mr. Fores is pointing to the location of the proposed pole, and I'm pointing to the location of the existing monopole.
Okay, but would you ask him to put the Elmo on? Because I see your handsome mug on the, yeah, and could you zoom in, please?
We can't, from where we're standing, we can't tell what you're seeing exactly.
I'm seeing the aerial photography, and I see a blue pen and a white, and a white pen.
Right.
And what I want to know is, who is the white pen and who is the blue pen?
The white pen is the existing monopole, and the blue pen is the proposed monopole.
Okay, thank you.
And a question here, the building between them is about 40 feet high, and that's all industrial, that is the, they have the, for the golf tournaments and for special events, they do have them piled up 20, 30 feet high, they're the stands, and that's what's along the railroad there. And we have an easement going all the way back. These buildings right here are RV covered storages, they're about 20, 25 feet high, and behind on this is all open storage, and these are our buildings, about 600, 700,000 square, 6, 70,000 feet of square, of storage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To expand on her questions and comments, do you know how many carriers are allowed on the 90-foot pole?
Three.
Three? I couldn't remember if it?
And we do have AT&amp;T, and we have two other ones, which I can't mention, because AT&amp;T pays for everything, and then we lease the remainder of the poles out. And in between two of our buildings there, it's asphalted, I do have a picture of it. And we can carry their, they require a site of about 300 square feet for their power stations and communication stations, so that's all behind the 10-foot building, I mean, block wall, and behind our buildings. So it's not noticeable at all.
And your proposed tower is 90 feet? What's the height of a monopole?
65 or 60 feet, 60 feet. It's 30 feet higher. And if you look, 65 feet. And, you know, there's going to be other people asking for this area. We've already had some other ones before, and we've kind of refused them because of who they were, but it is a very poor area for your cell phones. But if you go, like I mentioned, and you see three of them, you know, right next to each other, like at RV Park at Goodyear, it's, you know, it's nicer, I think, to have one and have three carriers on it. And we can, and they can have it, they'll be coming and processing with you, but we'll have the pole up, and they'll be asking for a special permit, you know, just to put it on the pole.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? Anyone else from the audience who wishes to address this case? All right. Joe, since no action, we don't have to move to continue this, it just will automatically happen, or do we need to do that?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you can just go ahead and conclude the public hearing. We are in the process of re-advertising, so it does not require postponement to a specific meeting.
Okay. All right, well, then I will close the public hearing, and we will vote on this case when we see it again. The next case is Case 103500002, sort of the Spirit Church Special Use Permit, and I will open the public hearing.
The sort of the Spirit Ministry and Barcade Development have submitted a special use application to locate a church in the Central Square Commercial Center. The center was approved in 2003 as a multi-phase development on 11 acres, 11 acres on the north side of Van Buren, east of Central Avenue. To date, the Phase 1 construction has been this commercial building along Van Buren, and in that is Estrella Cyclory, and Papa John's Pizza, and a few other smaller users. Phase 2 was the mini-storage facility located to the north and east, and Phase 3 with these two west-facing buildings right here. Hope's Closet recently moved into the northernmost building. Approval of a special use and subsequent building plan approval will allow for sort of the Spirit Ministry to occupy this 6,260-square-foot building. The ministry currently has 80 members, many of whom are here tonight, along with Pastor Jim Brown, and the owner of the center, Clemmie Arnold, is also here. The ministry will hold two worship services and a Sunday school class on Sunday mornings. An adult group meeting will be held on Tuesday evenings, and a youth group meeting will be held on Thursday evenings. The zoning ordinance requires, oh, I want to show you a second, sorry. Again, it's this building here that the ministry is looking to move into. The zoning ordinance requires parking on a per-assembly square footage basis and a remaining area square footage basis. And the existing commercial uses within the center are required to provide one parking space per every 300 square feet of area. In order for each of the uses to meet their zoning ordinance parking requirements, they will be putting in additional nine paved parking spaces over here. So with these nine, and all these spaces here, and all these spaces here, the zoning ordinance requirements for all the uses are being met. Now, the Chairman has some concerns about the parking situation, and we've drafted a possible STIP, should you all feel those same concerns, but I'm sure he'll want to speak to you about them. We have also recommended the standard STIPS that are related to the hours of primary worship services, notification of possible revocation of the special use if problems are caused for the other businesses in the center, and a STIP that acknowledges airport overflights and noise because of the location of the center. And with that, staff is recommending that the Commission recommend that the City Council approve the special use at their meeting on September 27th. And with that, if I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Karen? Gary, do you want to address your concerns?
Yeah, Sean, what I'd like to do is, my biggest concern with the parking is that nine additional spaces will provide a small bump out of paved area into the big, you know, dust air, dust bowl that is to the west of the facility, and my judgment says that most of the worshippers are going to want to park in front of the church, which basically says they're not going to want to park in front of, you know, the regular businesses on Van Buren, you know, or on the south side of the property. And I would feel a lot more comfortable with this special use application if they just extended the pavement all the way down to Van Buren. I mean, if they're going to pave nine spots, you know, I know it's an additional cost, but eventually they're going to have to pave that whole area, and I think it would be better for the church and not raise, you know, we're going to have a dust issue, and that's something that I don't think the church really wants. And so my suggestion would be just to extend that pavement, you know, south, down to Van Buren, and that would probably put in another, you know, 20 parking spaces, and I think that would more than accommodate the church and prevent us from raving dust. And that's literally my only concern with this, with this application.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I could, just for locational purposes, the new parking spaces, the nine new parking spaces are going to be built right here, so that they will be accessed off of this existing drive aisle in the center. And this dust area, this vacant area that's being referred to, this is actually Phases 4, 5, and 6 of Central Square. There will be future development there at another date. I've spoken to the members of the church about the concerns of the Chairman, and they probably would like to respond, if that's okay.
Mr. Chairman? Why put the other schematic up there? Why is it planned for the nine additional spots further to the north, instead of, is that what the Chairman's talking about, that they're going to park south of there? Is what he thinks?
I assume so. There are some utilities within this area, and the drive aisles, feasibly, it was not possible to locate them right here. One of the things that we looked at when we evaluated the use of the church in the center and the parking was the hours of operation for the other businesses. And Hope's Closet, which is in this entire building, is not open on Sundays. So, you know, in terms of wanting to park close to the church, there's all of this parking here, all of this parking here, and this parking here, and, you know, yes, it's somewhat of a walk down this way, but on Sundays, when the primary worship services are going on, there should be a great deal of empty park, empty paved parking.
Mr. Chairman, so you said that because of utilities and whatnot, that parking couldn't go south of there, so would it be even possible to build an entire strip all the way down to the main street?
Might not. And, you know, and it isn't just a matter of paving either, you know, there's drainage that has to go along with the paving, we have landscaping requirements for parking lengths longer than 12 spaces, so there's other expenses involved. There is also, and you can't see it from this scale of an aerial, there's a curved, there's a curb along this drive aisle right here that separates the pavement from the dirt. You know, this section will have to be removed here in order to locate those parking spaces, so, you know, parking over here would require driving over the curb as well.
I have another question. I guess the first other question is, is there ample parking without even having those nine spaces? I don't know what the equation is for parking, but it?
Well, it's one parking space per 75 square foot of assembly area in the church, and one for 300 square feet of the remaining area. From a practical standpoint, there probably is enough parking there, because the other businesses, like I said, aren't open on Sundays, but with this additional parking, everybody meets the zoning ordinance requirements, and obviously, that's what we strive to achieve.
I guess the next thing that occurs to me, is there some sort of city or county ordinance that prohibits parking in the dirt or stirring up dust?
The county has regulations that deal with dust control issues and?
Because I know that in my neighborhood with people with, doing weed control, people complain, and they're trying to keep their weeds up, and the county's out there writing them tickets to be, you know, just for trying to keep everything nice.
We have to say, Mr. Chairman, we have to say in requirements that dirt areas cannot be used for parking. If it becomes a problem, the property owner would contact it, and he would be required to take affirmative steps to preclude its unauthorized use.
Do you think, then, if that was the case, that the patrons started parking on there and causing dust and problems, that the city would follow through with that, and that would alleviate that problem?
Chairman Luxon and Commissioner Schlosser, yes, we would. As a matter of fact, in response to Chairman Gelsner's concerns, Karen drafted an additional stipulation to make sure that the owner and the applicant was aware of that, that in addition to providing, requiring patrons of the church to use in parking, they would be required to prohibit the use of the dirty area parking. If it was used for occasional use, it would have to be surfaced with a non-dust material and treated, and if it was used on a regular basis, then we would require that area to be taken.
Okay.
Okay. I guess my thought and feeling is it's, we've approved, what, two or three of these where these churches have filled dark space over the last year or so, and I think it's a blessing that there's users like these churches that are willing to come in there and take up this space. And I hate to see the church, I think the chairman's concern is a valid one, but with the city and county ordinance like that, I'd hate to see this church or any other church have to spend more money than they need to to get this church off the ground. So I think with what you said, that answers my concern and so I'm in favor of it as is.
Karen, what does your stipulation draft look like, so we can maybe see if it...
To read it into the record, and I've given this to the members of the church and the owner of the center. All parking for the primary weekly worship services shall occur on paved parking spaces only. If needed, occasional overflow parking shall be restricted to areas that comply with Article Six of the zoning ordinance, that's our parking ordinance, and shall require prior approval by the community development department. If overflow parking is needed on a regular basis, additional paved parking may be required by the community development department. Congregation has assured me they're not interested in jumping the curve and parking on the dirt parking, but certainly, you know, this would, could be in place if it became an issue for some reason, but...
Is the church fine with this stipulation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You can go up and read into the record. Just introduce yourself.
I'm Jim Brown, senior pastor of sort of the spirit ministry, and my address, I have this two-one-six-six-nine North Eighty-seventh Drive, Peoria, Arizona. And to the commission, we are fine with this stipulation.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome. Do you have any questions?
Pastor Brown, do you have anything else to add while you're up there at the podium?
The one thing I would add, that as a church, we are very respectful of the city ordinances and we have a congregation of people that obey the law and because of what we believe in, in our faith in Jesus Christ, to do those things which are correct and right for us to do and also respect the city ordinance. And so on that behalf, that's basically what I would like to say concerning that. Any other questions you have for me?
If I could ask you one question, where are you meeting now?
We are currently meeting in Phoenix at the Phoenix Business Center, Thirty-third Avenue and Thomas. We've been there for six years and we've not had one complaint from the city of Phoenix. And most, a lot of the members of the church live in Goodyear. Obviously, I live out in Peoria. Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is Chairman Gelsner in favor of this stipulation?
Luke, I'm happy with the stipulation and I will be voting in favor of the motion. I, you know, I believe that addresses my concern and I just assume welcome this church to Goodyear.
Okay, perfect. I think that says it all.
All right. I also have wishing to speak, Steve Anguise.
My name is Steve Anguise. I'm an associate pastor of sort of spirit ministry. I was actually in proxy of Pastor Jim in case he was running a little bit late, but we are excited to come into the community. We believe that we're actually here to serve and we currently do a few other things within the church. We do have emergency food boxes and things like that as well. So I think if anything, we're ready to serve the community, so it's, we're very excited. We have been established since nineteen ninety-eight with the corporate commission and we're a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, so we're, we pretty much, we've been established for a little over thirteen years.
Any other questions for?
Thank you.
Any other comments before the commission? All right, I will close the public hearing. And I will, as the chairman, our acting chairman today, sort of reiterate my concerns that I've had with the other similar applicants, you know, where we have, you know, churches and other religious organizations wishing to go in commercial centers. And whereas I understand Commissioner Schlosser's position on, you know, having tenants for these empty spaces, I'm just concerned with the compatible uses, you know, with retail and churches and just something that doesn't necessarily sit well with me and I'd prefer to see retail or more of a commercial use for these. And so I'm going to be voting against this proposal this evening. So, that being said, I will entertain a motion for approval of this case.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number one zero three five zero 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 two.
With the revised...
Well, I'll second it, Sean.
With the revised...
With the revised stipulation, with the add-on stipulation.
Is that acceptable to you, Gary?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, you have heard the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? No? Okay. By your vote of five, no, four ayes and one nay, you have recommended approval of this case. All right. And our last case this evening, our last area of business, if I can find my agenda, is the work session on the zoning ordinance text amendment. Joe, is that, is that you, Steve, got off the hook tonight?
Yeah, we gave Steve the night off. If it pleases the commission, I'll just run through the staff report briefly for my chair here and leave the formal presentation for the public hearing that we would have on this next month if it's ready to go. In your agenda packet, you received two copies of the proposed changes to Article One. One was a legislative copy that included the markups and comments, additions, deletions. Great for tracking, hard to read, so we gave you a second copy that was just the revised version that made it hopefully a little bit easier to read it in its finished draft form. Just to capture some of the changes that are being made in Article One, as you know, this article is the administration and procedures section of the ordinance, sets out the various boards and commissions and duties and responsibilities, as well as outlining certain procedures that are used in administering the ordinance. The first change is we added a couple of zoning districts to the table that were not reflected there before, also the Commerce Park District that we were, are proposing to create as a result of these changes. We organized it a little bit. Provisions related to process, such as the procedures for site plan reviews and variances, were moved from the administrative section to the procedures section. We pulled in the section from Article Four regarding non-conforming uses into the, into this section because it really made more sense to have it in along with the administration and procedures. The fourth change was the development policy committee. The ordinance previously referred to a site plan review committee. The internal committee that we have set up is basically referred to as a development policy committee, so we're changing the terminology to match our current practice. The development policy committee is also, section was revised to reflect the fact that the decision basically is being made or the responsibility for communicating the decision is the community development director slash zoning administrator. Because basically, the committee doesn't always function with full membership because there's some items that are of lesser interest to some of the departments that were represented or identified previously than other items. On amendments, the ordinance currently states that a property can revert, or a property can revert in its zoning after a stipulation is not complied with. Basically, state law requires us to still to conduct a public hearing in initiating that reversion, so we've added that back in. With respect to use permits, the approval period for use permits has been increased from one year to two years. Currently, the ordinance says a use permit, once it's approved, is supposed to be established within one year. But when you consider the pure definition of the word established, that would basically be a build, a business that's, if it's a business use, that has been constructed and open for business, whereas a year's period of time may not be sufficient to accommodate submitting for site plan approval, building construction plan approval, building permit, construction, and then certificate of occupancy. So the two-year period expands that and makes it so that it more accurately reflects reality, I think. It also provided that the zoning administrator can grant one-year extensions upon a showing that a project is being diligently pursued. There are instances where projects, for one reason or another, may get stalled or may have difficulty making the time period, but it doesn't make sense necessarily to revert the use permit or expire the use permit if they're in midstream of trying to develop the project. The citizen review process was also modified in a couple of ways. We typically have not been posting the property for the citizen review meeting. We've been relying primarily on the publication of notice and the letters to adjoining property owners. So we've taken the posting requirement out. It was somewhat optional at the discretion of the community development director. Now we're clearly stating that it is, that it won't be done unless the community development director or zoning administrator feels that it would be of benefit in a particular case. The second thing that changed is we now, and actually we've been doing this as a matter of practice, but this will make it a requirement, that in addition to sending notice to people within five hundred feet for the citizen review, we're sending notice to people within five hundred feet for the actual zoning case as well. The state statute minimum requirement is three hundred feet for notice, and that's what the ordinance basically said, is that we would meet state statute. But one of the things we've run into over time is people get notified for the citizen review meeting and then they don't, and then some don't get notified for the zoning hearing because of the distance of five hundred and going to three hundred. And people, citizens, have a tendency to feel that something is wrong, you know, they're somehow intentionally being left out, and we found that to be not very good practice. And so we voluntarily changed it and this would make it a requirement in our code. We also added an administrative relief section, which would allow the zoning administrator the ability to grant relief for property of a change of not more than ten percent. And this is mostly with respect to a setback. There would still be criteria, there's still criteria in the ordinance relative to when those determinations are made or should be made, but it wouldn't eliminate the need of going through the whole public hearing process for a variance for a very minor adjustment, say of six inches or a foot. So that is something that we had built into a number of our planned area development approvals, but it was not a general provision in the ordinance, and so now we're making applicable to all properties. And then lastly, the design review and design guidelines appeal board, when the design guidelines were adopted, there was an intent to create an appeals board, but one was never created. And fortunately, we have never had an appeal, so we'd never had to deal with the fact that we didn't have a board to hear the appeal. But we believe that, given our track record, we'd be better served probably not to have that board of appeals exist in the ordinance, in that we would then process any appeals through the planning and zoning commission. You would serve as that appeals body. I think if it were a problem where we saw a lot of appeals and it took a lot of the commission's time, we may want to revisit the design guidelines appeals board and set one up. But for the time being, we're recommending that that be eliminated and that the commission serve in that capacity. And then lastly, I wanted to point out that the version that was in your agenda packet was slightly different than the version I handed out last month, and there was a couple of things, changes, that we found that we wanted to make in the staff report. Those were also pointed out. In section one-three-three was revised to include findings that must be met in order for the zoning administrator to grant the one-year extension of the use permit that I mentioned before, so that it's not just granted for no reason. There has to be an actual showing of cause and that they were diligently pursuing the development. And lastly, the design review section was reorganized and we added a new subparagraph to the review process for a separate design review application because it wasn't clear how that would work when a design review application is submitted separately from a site plan. They're normally submitted together, but there can be a case where there's a separate design review that follows later on, and we wanted to clarify how that process meshes with the site plan review process. So that was one additional change that we made, I wanted to point out. We posted the changes on our website under the draft documents and sent out an email notification to subscribers, interested parties. To date, we've only really gotten one comment back. It was from Dave Prescott, and it was a two-part comment. One, he made a suggestion that the, if I understood it correctly, was something with respect to the city center overlay district and that there may be other city centers within the city in the future as the city grows, and perhaps we should retitle that. But the section that is in the code right now is specific to a specific area and we're not inclined to change that. If there are other areas that require similar treatment, we would add those then to the ordinance. And the second comment was a typo, so I won't bother mentioning it any further than that. So with that, I'd like to hear from the commission if you have any questions or comments. Our intent is to move forward with public hearing on this article at the next meeting and add it to the list of the ones that have gotten that far in the process and hopefully be in a position to bring you some more. We're still working on it. Actually, nine and ten probably aren't that big of a deal, but Article Four is proven to be challenging in terms of how to deal with special uses, use permit uses, and temporary uses. So that's what's been taking the most time in trying to get that article rewritten. So I'll stand for any questions or comments that commission may have.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Smiths, forgive my ignorance, but this development policy committee, it's currently something that we have, it's just not in code?
Commissioner Peters, it's in the code, but it's referred to as a site plan review committee.
Okay.
And basically, the development policy committee functions in the capacity of a site plan review committee, but it also functions in the capacity of a design review committee. And the terminology that we've used in terms of our internal structure is development policy committee. It is basically a development review committee. And we tossed back and forth of whether or not we wanted to bother to change the name of the committee even as we are doing this, but the development policy committee is familiar to many who work with us on a regular basis, so we elected to leave it alone.
And Mr. Chair, Joe, so that committee, what process, if something fails that committee, that's when it goes to this appeals board that you're talking about?
That's...
What's the public process for that committee? And how does that exactly interact with the commission? And does everything go through that committee before it comes to the commission or, you know?
Yes. Basically, all applications are reviewed by the Development Policy Committee. They get a varying level of review depending on the type of application. We don't get a lot of comments on design review from some departments, I don't know, Parks and Rec or something. I mean, when it's outside kind of their purview, they, we don't get a lot of comments from them and we don't involve them. But otherwise, we, annexations and rezonings and preliminary plots and final plots, all get reviewed through that committee. And then it's staffed by our department. The committee is charged with rendering decisions on certain items like site plans. So if the committee basically rejected a site plan outright and denied it, and the applicant felt that that was not fair, they would have the opportunity to file an appeal. That appeal would have, would basically then go to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So, Mr. Chair and Joe, so that committee essentially, it's a review so that, you know, to make sure that the water pipes are in the right place, so that, you know, utilities sees it and, you know, the planning section sees it to make sure that it's properly annexed. It's more of just kind of crossing Ts and dotting Is, kind of? Is that really what it's intended for? I don't understand why, what's the necessary purpose for it?
Well, Commissioner Peters, the committee exists as, to perform that review.
Right.
And in its current form, in the ordinance, it isn't actually really clear exactly how it acts. It doesn't, it's not defined with having a quorum or anything like that. So what we've changed is we've placed that responsibility, I believe it's either with the community development director or the zoning administrator who is, well, the zoning administrator is responsible for coordinating all activities of the committee and issuing a written decision. And then that's that written decision which can be appealed if it is judged to be unfair by the applicant.
So it's an actual formal meeting as opposed to just sending a document around to the different departments?
Yes. Yes. The members, and as I said, the membership varies depending on the type of application. But yeah, it's a meeting. We hold it every Wednesday morning and we review applications jointly. The comments that are received are reviewed and discussed. And then in the initial stages of the review, a comment letter is generated to the applicant saying, you know, "This is wrong" or "You need to fix this, you need to do that." And then they'll submit it again on a second iteration and churns until it gets right.
So your experience is you don't usually vote until everything's right? You don't deny it? You just kind of say, hey, these are our concerns? And the applicant either accepts those concerns and then moves forward or disagrees with those? And then that's when, you know, that's when the possibility of a denial takes place? It's more of like a working body with the applicant?
Commissioner Peters, I would say that's correct. And as I indicated, there, in my experience, and even predating my experience, I don't, I can't think of a single example where we had an appeal. For the most part, items get worked out. Maybe the applicant quits. I mean, that can happen, where they just elect that they don't want to comply with all the regulations and they don't pursue it. But I don't recall having a, an application that we, where the, where the committee is decision-making that has just flat out ever been denied and then appealed. It's certainly, on items that are not decisions but are just recommendations, those come to the commission. The commission has the opportunity to review the recommendation, agree, disagree, modify, and send it forward. And likewise, when it gets to the city council where the decision is made, they do the same. So in some instances, it's just an advisory committee, but there are applications in terms of design review, site plan review, where it's a decision-making body.
Thank you. I know these rewrites are cumbersome and tedious. And, you know, at least from my perspective, at least this document is a lot easier to read than the one that exists currently. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. Well, we're hoping it's an improvement. And I would like to recognize Steve, even though we let him have the night off, and he stuck me with doing his presentations. But he was responsible for the majority of the writing on this and he did an excellent job in preparing it.
I have a question, Sean. Do we need to save the working copies that you have given us now? Or will there be additional revisions that we will see when the public hearing takes place next month?
Commissioner Lux and Commissioner Gelsner, that's a good question. Frankly, at this stage, I'm not anticipating with not having any request for change at this point, we probably could use the same copies all over again next month.
Okay, thank you. I'll save mine.
Can we just keep it in our folder that we give back to you and it doesn't get lost at home?
That'd be fine, too.
All right. Any other business? All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. We're adjourned.
All right. Thank you. Take care, guys. Bye.
Have fun, chief.